I call this regular meeting of the Lakota Board of Education, Monday, October 10th, 2022 to order, please. Mr. Zink, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Adi? Here. Ms. Bodie?
Here.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Ms. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. Adi, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under our individual.
Thank you, Mr. Adi. Board will move to three, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer, is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Mr. Zink, please call the roll.
Discussion?
This is Bodie.
Madam President, I would like to allow, I would like to make a motion that we allow all the speakers' time to speak this evening.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies.
So that's a no, you don't want our community to speak?
Is there further discussion, Board? Hearing none, Mr. Zink?
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
The President did not clearly state what we are voting on before we decided to take a vote, can she please restate the vote?
Mr. Zink, would you please clarify for Mrs. Bodie?
This is to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. We'll move to superintendent comments, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Connor, just a few items to make sure that we're calendaring and upcoming events. First two would be our master facilities meetings, we have our next one at Liberty Township on October 19th. And then October 24th, we are at Creekside. And the Liberty Township one is at 5:00 PM before the trustees meeting, the 24th. There's a building tour at 6:30, and then we'll pick up at 7:00. Also, just a reminder that our quality profile will be coming out, we have it electronically, but we'll be mailing those to our residents as well. And my last item is, we started Stuff the Bus today for our community, and that goes until October 24th. That's all I had.
Would you like to explain what Stuff the Bus?
Sure, we do an event for Reach Out Lakota, and we have, the Board has done that for many years for our community, and we collect items. And buildings are in a competition with one another, we used to have competitions against other districts, but they have kind of gone by the wayside with COVID, but we do it internally now. Nope.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Zink?
I just wanted to add that over the last several weeks, we've demoed a couple of different softwares. One being OpenGov, the other one being the Ohio Checkbook, to kind of look toward possibly implementing one of those. Unfortunately, we had to have the community engagement meetings kind of rescheduled due to some scheduling conflicts. So that's Wednesday now at 4:00. And I look forward to bringing some of those up to the group and kind of going over that. Other than that, I don't have anything at this time.
This has been a long time discussion doing this, so I'm very thankful that we're moving that forward. And is that something we'd be able to implement pretty quickly?
I am hoping to, but you know, once we, once we go over kind of the ins and outs of it, then hopefully we'll be able to get a better timeline, then maybe even do a demo and stuff.
Terrific, thank you. Board will move to number five on the agenda, public comment. Mr. Ewing?
Good evening. My name is Alex Ewing, and I am the legal counsel for the Board of Education. The district was recently sued alleging that its public participation policy is unconstitutional. As a result, the Board needs to consider revisions to its public participation policy. All policy changes should proceed through the Policy Committee Review Process. Until that process is completed, and to avoid additional unnecessary and costly litigation. As legal counsel, we recommend that the district temporarily, temporarily suspend the public participation policy. And request the Policy Committee to consider a revised policy.
Please continue, Mr. Ewing.
We, we do not discuss the details of litigation in public, and if the Board would like to discuss this matter further, we would recommend that it move to enter into executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing, our legal counsel has recommended that the Board suspend public comment. Is there a motion to do so?
Madam President, I want to make a motion.
Yes, Mr. Adi.
In pursuant to Board Policy 0131, I move to suspend Board Policy 0169 dot one regarding public participation on the basis of the following compelling reasons. Due to recent litigation related to public comment at Board meetings, we need to review our existing policy to ensure it is compliant with the law.
Is there anything further, Mr. Adi? I'll look for a second, if so. Is that it, on your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second to the motion? I'll second it. Thank you, Mr. Adi, thank you, Mrs. Casper, discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
I believe that every one of us here is, we're here for the interests of the school district. We're here for the interests of the students. We're here for the interests of the students, we're here for the interest of the entire community. I believe that every resources that we have should be geared towards running the system, the school district. I can see that it's creating more lawsuit, and there is little resources we have, we're going to be paying other lawyers or the people interested in suing the school district. So, and that is why I'm moving this motion, let's make sure we are in line with the law. I love to do things based on the law, anything outside the law, I think I'm not going to be part of it. And that is why I'm moving this motion, let's do it by the law, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adi.
Madam President?
This is Bodie.
Alex, can you tell me what policy is specifically suggested that we update?
It would be 0169 dot one, the public participation.
What part of that policy do we need to update? Do you know the wording?
Ms. Bodie, respectfully, I would, I would prefer to have those discussions in executive session.
Okay, so I am going to say that I think muscling in the community is a bad idea. I think the censorship from our President has got to stop, and controlling the meetings without any respect being paid to procedure. This is a bad idea and will not go well for you.
That gambling was not to you, please go ahead.
That's all I have to say.
So further comment?
I think it's unfortunate that we're having to pursue this motion. But unfortunately, I know I personally am struggling to understand what is allowed and what's not allowed. And I think asking someone to try to moderate that from the chair's seat has become increasingly difficult in our litigious society. And I too don't want to see resources go to when we think we're following the law, and then we get sued, and then that case gets settled, to continuing to have that happen without making sure that we are completely buttoned up on this, so we don't continue to have to deal with litigation.
Yeah, I mean, we have been struggling with this for two years on, and as a reminder, as a school district, we are not required to have public comments. We do it because we do want to hear from the community, but over the last two years, the amount of resources that we're wasting on legal fees is becoming out of control. And also, from my personal standpoint, it would be one thing if it's gotten to a point where a lot of times at the mic, there's not even any decorum, and there's not even any respect. And people yelling from the audience, it's, it's gotten to the point where we can't even conduct business. So we have to figure out the best way to use our public comment policy. And if our legal counsel is telling us that that is to suspend temporarily public comments, then that's what we need to do.
Mrs. President, can I put something in?
Go ahead, Mr. Adi.
Yes. One of the main reason why this motion is very important to me is, we have tried to settle this Ohio to this meeting. Prior to today's meeting, we expected that lawsuit should have been settled. And I understand that it's still pending, and there are still conditions we have to meet, if I understand. So to me, I'm one of those that proposed that we should even have longer time allocated for public participation. And even from day one, I proposed increasing the time. But if resources are going to be going to the wrong, wrong places, I don't think it's helping the community, and it's not helping the school district. So let's get it right, then we'll come back to what we used to do, and that is why I proposed this motion.
Is there further discussion?
Yes, so public comment is on the agenda right now, and it's open to public comment, so allow that public to speak.
There is a motion on the floor right now that we're discussing, do you have any further discussion?
No.
I agree with many of the comments, it has been increasingly difficult, especially this year, and I know in the past few years, it's been increasingly difficult to moderate these meetings, to find the balance between First Amendment rights for our community, and to find the balance between respect and decorum in a meeting, and being able to accomplish the business of a meeting. This is not my first choice by any means, I don't think it's the first choice of any person up here. But I also am not going to go against the counsel that we've been given from our, our legal advisors. So with that being said, if there's no further discussion, Mr. Zink, would you take a vote, please?
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Madam President, would you please repeat the vote before we take vote, so that we know clearly what we are stating on?
Mr. Zink, would you please repeat the vote for Mrs. Bodie?
Can you give me the, what Isaac read? Motion to suspend public comment. Pursuant to the Board Policy 0131, I move to suspend Board Policy 0169 dot one regarding public participation on the basis of the following compelling reasons. Due to the recent litigation related to the public comment at Board meetings, we need to review our existing policies to ensure it is compliant with the law.
Thank you. I vote no.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Ewing, did you need to share anything further with us?
Nothing further.
Thank you very much. Board will move to number five on the agenda, Board Updates, Butler Tech, Mrs. Schaefer?
I believe that's number six.
I'm sorry, you're correct, number six, Board Updates.
Yes, there's two different ones that I'm passing along. We had a very productive and a bit longer meeting than we typically have, we recognized a student, Evan Smith Jr., and his instructor, Mr. Hall, who won a firefighter skills USA national competition or placed second in that. Since Butler Tech started competing in that, they started at fourth and have increased to second. So the young man who won this competition is a junior, so he's hoping to take home first place next year is his goal, we'll see. It evaluates their skills with gears, ropes, a written test, and with ladders, so congratulations to him. We then moved on to reviewing the strategic plan and how we're doing relative to that strategic plan. And the first goal is to be number one in student performance, or yeah, performance. And 91% of all of our students, when we left, we were able to know what their goal was as far as the four Es were. And the state goal on that metric is 72%, so we felt like we were doing very well. For adult education completion, the rate is 86.3 with the credentialing goal at 60%. So again, Butler Tech's far exceeding that goal. For goal two, to reach the greatest number of students, we have reached 18,710 students are served in at least one class in secondary. Which again, if you look at graduation rates and achievement, if students participate in at least one career tech class, they tend to do better. That's supported by the data. In addition, we have 658 adult ed full-time equivalents. So again, they, the way they look at that, those are the, how many people have completed more than 450 hours of coursework? In addition, our Project Life, which handles our students with special needs, has been replicated nationally. We actually now have a team at Butler Tech that goes out and helps other schools implement that plan, and that has now been replicated 35 times. One of the locations is Hawaii, and there have been many who have suggested they're willing to go do that training. Goal number three is to ensure financial stability. We have 33% of the prior year's cash on hand in the general fund, and we've actually been able to come in with the new Natural Science Center at budget, which given the current situation and building has been quite a feat. In addition, Butler Tech was able to secure the funding, as we know, from the commissioners for the Advanced Manufacturing and Middletown Aviation Centers that we will start working on. Goal number four was outstanding stakeholder engagement. The Business Advisory Committee recently had a tour where people could go from, into the different classes and be met by an escort from Butler Tech at the different programs that was taken advantage of. We've also started work at the Juvenile Justice Center to again help kids who may have had an issue get back on track and do credit recovery, as well as perhaps learn a trade. We've also copied the Student Ambassador Program that Lakota East does, and that's being replicated at Butler Tech because they knew how successful that was at Lakota. In addition, there's a Career Exploration Lab that many of our junior high students have taken advantage of. And there were 2,700 applicants for this year's class. Goal five was organizational and efficiency, and inclusion, access, equity, and diversity. And the diversity in the student body, Butler Tech is serving students from all spaces and all walks of life. And at this point, it used to be an interview system, but they've switched to a lottery system this year for the first time, and that's been very successful in making sure many students have access who might have been too shy or uncomfortable to go through an interview process. And now they've been able to take advantage of the program. We have 33 new students this year with special needs. We've doubled the number of English language learners, which again, we feel like they may have been reluctant to do an interview. And the makeup of career tech nationally is 70% male and 30% female, and Butler Tech is actually 45% male and 55% female. We think that may be partially driven because Butler Tech is a biomed program that many other schools and career tech don't have access to. And that tends to attract a larger population of female students, so that's probably why that's so strongly weighted that way. But again, good news in all of those fronts. There will be a ribbon cutting for the new Natural Science Center barring any unforeseen circumstances on October 27th. And we look forward to ushering our students into that, they've gone from trailers to a beautiful new building that's made to look like a barn and have a lot of flexible learning spaces. So we look forward to having the students take advantage of that excellent building.
That's been a long time in the making.
You're right, yeah.
That is really exciting to hear it come to fruition.
Absolutely, and then the excitement of the Advanced Manufacturing and Aviation will be great, too.
And also exciting that the good work of Butler Tech continues, so thanks, thanks for sharing those metrics with us. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Adi?
Ms. Schaefer, I know, we talked about this before, I am, every opportunity that I know we will have for our students and our staff, I want to exploit it. We lost is it one or two FTE before?
We reallocated one full FTE at the request of Lakota, I guess.
Okay, so I wanted to know, I was, I was going to ask you how long or what is the process of getting back the opportunities we lost? Since we got, we lost two, correct?
No.
Oh, we.
Well, I believe it's one, again, I've sent you that data, I can double check that, I can't remember that off the top of my head. But again, same answer as before, that that was at Lakota's request that we reallocate those services. When we expanded our Lakota Academy, that was fulfilling a lot of those same needs. So we're serving students in different ways at Lakota, whether that be at the Bioscience Center or any of the on-campus programs. And we still are offering a significant number of Butler Tech courses within Lakota's walls. So it was the, how the resources could be used most efficiently from a Lakota perspective, and that was the request. So that was in a Butler Tech decision.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Legislative, Mr. Zink, Mr. Miller?
We were just talking, if there hasn't been much action from legislation, just because we're getting ready for the election in November, do you have anything?
No, I haven't really seen anything coming across right now. With noting.
Are there any headlines being shown yet on lame duck legislation after the election?
Just circumstantial right now, nothing, nothing that's been out there. A lot of our organizations, at least for me, for best, so they sort of put the kibosh right now and talking about anything legislative until after the election.
We might want to be thinking about a legislative visit in November?
It's a great idea.
Would you think about setting that up?
Yep.
It might be something we could do while we're up.
Yeah.
Yep, that'd be good.
But let's go ahead and think about it now. Anything else on legislative, Board, anyone? Mr. Adi? All right, we'll move to community engagement, Mrs. Casper?
Well, Mr. Miller and Mr. Zink stole my thunder about master facility meetings and community engagement meeting this Wednesday. But also, we had DPC on Wednesday where Chris and his team did a condensed version of the community conversation on safety and shared that with our parents. Other than that, just to reiterate, master facility 1019, Liberty Township, and 1024 at Creekside.
And one point that was highlighted there that I think it's important to remember, want to remind our parents, in the case of emergencies, want to be sure that everyone's updated information is as current as you can make it. Even if you think it's updated, please take a moment, go in, take a look at it, because that is how you'll be contacted. If there's any kind of an emergency when we're looking at reunification with our students, that's how you'll be notified that your student is okay and where to find them. So please double check your information on a periodic basis.
And, and Mrs. Fuller said to check all of your information, your cell phone, your email, to make sure that it's going to the right places. She said that, I believe she said that the first thing you would get is if you register with your cell phone is a text to tell you that an email will be coming.
That would be the fastest.
That would be the fastest way, because like we've always said, in the event of something, a bad day, that the most important thing that the school administrators are going to be doing is keeping your children safe. So they are not going to have time to stop and send out emails, so it will come from Mrs. Fuller and her team.
Any other questions or comments on community engagement, Board? Anything else on that, Mr. Zink, Mr. Miller? All right, we'll move to number seven, the Treasurer's Recommendations Action Items. A, approve the minutes from September 12th, 2022, the regular meeting, and the September 28th, 2022, special meeting. Is there a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper, thank you, Mr. Adi. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to make a note that it was brought to my attention after getting here this afternoon and looking at the minutes that we might have a bit of a discrepancy. And although the recorded minutes are official, the written minutes are important as well, so I just want to let you know that I was going to take a deeper look into those and potentially at the next meeting be bringing to you a updated revision of the minutes if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Zink, any other discussion? Board, discussion? All right, Mr. Zink, the roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board will move to number eight, the Superintendent Recommendation Action Items, A, approve the personnel items, and B, approve donations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie, is there discussion?
Just, just to point out that we're starting to get retirements already, and it seems like it's a little bit early, but there's some really good people that we'll be losing, but we wish them well, but they are starting to roll in early, so.
A long time, Mrs. Bodie.
I don't want to call out anybody in particular, but there's some really quality people there.
Unfortunately, I think we have to accept them anyway, but.
We do.
They can't retire, we won't let them.
I have discussion.
Mrs. Bodie?
Matt, I know we talked about having like an exit interview, and I, I believe at the last Board meeting we talked about this, you had offered some type of support, or let me talk about that, is there any further discussion on that, or where are we with exit interviews?
Yep, HR department's working on that, so we are going to have a link that staff can go to when they do leave the district that they can do. But it's not finalized yet, but they had something that they're working on and seeing what other school districts do as well, so it's in process.
Would this be something that we give to them when they choose to leave, just to email them, hey, if you would take the time to please respond?
Correct.
Okay. The other thing I would like to consider is our sorry, let me click on it, our I don't know what the proper name is, sorry, let me look it up. Like the support, like the janitors and
Support staff.
Support staff, have we checked lately with their pay, and is it competitive with local areas? I've had a couple reach out to me saying that our pay is lower than some of the surrounding school areas, and that might be a reason why we are losing, losing them.
We haven't, we haven't lately, would that be a negotiated item, so we usually do that during, when we do contracts. But I can tell you, I mean, just by way of comparison, I know that and it's really not specifically addressing what you're asking, but I could see that because other districts and other places have different agreements that change at different times. So it's obviously something for us to look at and check out. The only thing I would have to compare that to is our sub bus drivers are paid the highest in the county and the region. So I did, we did check that out, Chris shared that information today, but if you have other specifics, send them my way and I'll take a look.
And we had just actually recently shared some information with the Great Oaks Treasure. And I just received something back today, I haven't had time to take a deeper dive into it, but I think that's kind of some data points from a bunch of different schools in the area to kind of review some of the salaries and different things, so we could take a look at that.
I'm, yeah, thank you, I'm specifically speaking about like the janitors and whatnot that are working inside the school, it's not the busing.
I believe, I believe what I received today might have had that in there, I just, like I said, hadn't had time to look at it, but I'll be sure to report that at the end of the week.
Our, our I'm sorry.
I want to put my support on Ms. Bodie's request on this. The fact that we're losing people should be a concern, and it's also very, very important to know if, from the, from the interviews to know And it's also very, very important to know if, from the, from the interviews, to know if we're losing because we're not competitive in our salaries. Because it's a concern, and this has been brought up, she's been bringing that up for a while. And I think it's worth putting more time to get it out on time. Because the more people we lose, it's not, it's not, it's hard to get good teachers these days. So I think it's very important. So I want to throw my support on.
Our custodians are in, under the LSSA contract, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And last time we made adjustments when we did review the LSSA contract because we recognized that we were at that point in time paying less than some of our surrounding school districts. So we made adjustments so that we would be competitive in pay, which is again, typically what we do with the renegotiation of the agreements. And then there was an increase that's built in once we made those adjustments to become on par with our competitors.
And as Mr. Miller noted, contracts across the state with different districts are done at different times. So it could be that we're sitting much higher at some point in the contract, but as over the course of the three-year contract, it changes. My question, I think, would be to analyze, are we indeed losing more than at the normal rate? To consider if there is an issue, so appreciate getting a report back on that.
I do want to point out one person, and it just hit me, if that's okay. And usually I don't do this, but we have a custodian who after 45 years is retiring. So Mr. Combs at Liberty Junior, yeah.
Oh, my gosh, he's retired.
So if anybody wants to give me a hard time, that's, I'm not calling out others. If you get to 45, I'll mention you.
Wow.
So kudos to him, and we thank him for his work. And I know that the building over there will miss him, and they're going to do something special for him as they should.
I don't know if people fully realize how the custodians truly become a part of the fabric of a, of a district and of a building and they have great relationships often with the students. And I mean, it really is heartfelt when they do retire and the students really have formed strong bonds with those folks who are working so hard every day to create a nice environment.
Right, I mean.
I'd say that about our support staff in general, our cafeteria ladies, our aides in the classroom. They're all very much a fabric of our district and very important to the work that we do for our students.
I think we can all agree that we, we remember our lunch ladies and we remember our janitors and those who are constantly at the school supporting the district.
And more to that, I think we should also start to start recognizing them as well. Because I've seen all the time, we recognize teachers, we recognize students. But like Ms. Bodie said, janitors are very important because if they are not here, the place would not be clean. So I think it's time we start to dip, dip, deeper and start recognizing them as well. Thank you, Ms. Bodie.
Without further discussion, we'll take a vote. I've got a motion in a second on superintendent recommendations, Mr. Zink.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Please state what we are voting on clearly before we take the vote.
Mr. Zink, would you please restate the motion?
This is the approval of the personnel items and the approval of the donations. Superintendent recommendations.
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
We'll move to 10, new business.
I have no vote.
Did I miss you?
We missed Mr. Adi.
Mr. Adi.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adi, for the correction. We'll move to 10, new business, is there new business? Hearing none, move to closing comments. Mrs. Bodie, we'll start with you.
I do not agree with the actions of the board to muzzle the community. This is about censorship of the truth regarding Matt Miller, our superintendent. This situation is not about a crime, this is about character and ethics. What Matt Miller has demonstrated is not the character we would want in charge of our students. Dragging the student in the community through, through this speaks about your character. The super should remove himself from the situation.
Is that all? Mrs. Schaefer?
I will continue to look at things that we are innocent until proven guilty, which is what I thought people supported in the court of law. And it did not judge people for, based on information that could easily be misrepresented and potentially even fabricated. So I am glad that we are following the law on this situation. I would like to congratulate all of our students who are competing in different GMC competitions right now as well as all of our band competitions that are happening and are being, Lakota is being well represented at all of those competitions. So congratulations to all of our students as they show off what they've accomplished.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer, Mrs. Casper.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of going, I believe, last week to Hope Wells Walkathon to their, to their outdoor walkathon. And when I got there, they were $700 short of their goal. And by the time I left, I'd gotten an email from one of the parents saying that they had met their goal. So the PTA put on an amazing event, and I know they just had it at Shawnee, I believe, last week. And the two, two of the junior schools have had their color run. So I love how our, we're back to normal as far as our PTO and PTAs being able to have these events that raise money for their schools and the district and give back. So that's why we're here, and that's what we should be focusing on.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Mr. D?
Yes. I want to personally tell this school district that I take everything about this school district personal. And I believe that we all need this school district to remain the best. And it is our responsibility, all of us, to make sure that this school district remain the best. I am somebody that believe that everything should be done with decency and with facts. We have heard all your cries, all your emails. If anybody had sleepless night, it's me. Because I know that I ran for this, for this position because I want the writing done. I'm not for anybody. I want us to go deeper, get all the facts and all the evidences before we make decision. I am for everybody. So long as it is for the students and for the staff, count me in. But anything outside that, I am not. I, I know what is lack. I've seen lack in my life. I came out of nothing, and I'm proud to say to everybody that Isaac City right here came out of nothing. So for me to see resources being thrown around is one of the reasons why I'm insisting that let us all be we the Lakota we talk about. The board is trying to do whatever is right to make sure we make the right decision. So remember, we are for you. We are for the students, we are for the staff, we are for everybody, the entire community. So when we get to the end, everybody will know why we're doing what we're doing. But remember, we're hearing you. And I've been having sleepless night myself. So this motion that I moved, I'm going to clarify again. When I see the numbers, I expected that we should have settled it. But how long are we going to continue to do this? We might have another public participation today and another lawsuit. How long are we going to pursue lawsuits? How much money are we going to be paying lawyers? And individuals that are interested in making those money? We're taking those resources from the students. That's what pays me the most. So let's do what is right, and let's do what is legal. And that's what I stand for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D. Mr. Zink.
I just want to apologize, Mr. D, for missing, missing you on the vote. Sorry about that. It's hard to believe that I'm two and a half months in almost. It feel, it feels a lot longer. But I, I just, I, I just can't reiterate enough how much I appreciate all the staff at the treasurer's office, all the help that they do to make this go as smooth as possible. And the exec team, I still appreciate them humoring me on a five-year forecast review that'll be coming up again next month. So we're, we're working toward that, so that's all I have.
We're glad you're in the seat. Just a couple items, one would be for, in terms of the contracts that we were talking about earlier. If you go to the State Employee Relations Board, the SERB site, you can see everyone's contracts on there. So that might help get the information. But I know you have some comparables that might make it a little bit quicker and easier to see. But everybody can see those on the SERB website. And also, I just want to mention that at the November, I believe, 7th board meeting, we'll be doing a deeper dive into our local report card, our test scores, and where we go from here. So I do want to mention that as well. So just about a month. That's it.
Madam President, I have something else to say.
We're going to, to move on.
Actually, I would like, I would like the floor, please.
During closing comments, there's one round for every board member at this point.
Actually, there is not just one round, you can go back around before you take a vote for closing and to ensure that there is any other comments, and I have more comments I would like to speak.
Word, what is your will?
It doesn't matter what the will is, that's the policy.
Board, what is your will?
Having lived in the school district for the last 18 years, I can honestly say there is no other situation that has ever warranted the level. Point of order, I'm speaking.
Out of order.
Point of order, I am speaking, and I have the floor. Warranted the level.
Mrs. Bodie, you do not have the floor.
Of order, I have the floor. Was the allegations against our superintendent currently due. Since August 16th, the situation has given the community full view of the incompetency of those who have elected to protect our kids.
Call for the vote.
Tonight, I can give you an ass.
Is there a second?
What you have shown to this community is that you protect this, so you are a puppet of the teachers' union, our kids, and our lives.
To adjourn.
You can in good faith justify to this community why you have failed to let Mr. Miller on leave in the last 53 days. You can not in good faith explain to this community why you deleted over 92 comments that, of the thought issue was from Mrs. Schaefer.
Last week, when the second.
The hospital question.
I know it's very hard to hear.
Second.
The second was from Mrs. Schaefer.
Yeah, it's not, that's, that's.
Would you, just so everyone knows what the motion is, could you please repeat that?
There was a motion to adjourn by Ms. Casper, seconded.
There was a call to question, which I think we need to vote on first.
We would need to do the call to question, correct?
Right. So the call to question was Mrs. Schaefer and Mrs. Casper.
Okay.
What you call the vote?
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Now.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. I will take a motion to adjourn. And boy, I'll let you know what my closing comments were in a different conversation. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mrs. Schaefer, motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Casper?
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Let the minister reflect that the board president interrupted me. Excuse me, I'm talking.
Ms. O'Connor?
You interrupted everyone else.
Mrs. Bodie, you are again out of order.
Let the minister reflect that the board president interrupted me during the board comments.
The last voter?
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.